Are we all back? Okay. We are now going to go into our auditor's presentation. And...
Go for it.
Go for it. Introduce yourself, go for it. I'm sorry, I don't know which one you are.
My name is...
Hi, thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. My name is Jim Lo, partner in charge for Internal Law Services at Markham.
I have my colleague Mike McShay, and we're going to present on what we've been speaking with John Wilcox, if that's okay.
Yes.
Great. Mike, we have a presentation we'll throw up.
It's fine. We'll just continue on.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, continue.
Great, thank you. Mike, do you want to present, please?
Yes, please let me know if that's visible to everyone in the meeting. All right, go ahead, Jim.
Great. Mike, why don't we go to slide four? So, we understand that the town is looking to understand the overspend by the Department of Education that had downstream consequences on the current year fiscal approach. Mike and myself have been helping a number of municipalities exactly with this sort of issue, the interaction between the town, the Department of Education, and the school department. Our approach is twofold. While we need to understand the root cause that caused the overspend, a lot of what we want to do is to try to identify the deficiencies in the overall process to be sure it's prevented going forward and it never happens again. So with respect to our approach, we would look to the overall budgeting process and the interaction between the town and the Department of Education. We'd want to understand the organization and the reporting structure and do walkthroughs and interviews of the various folks within both organizations to understanding the forecasting process, the approval of that budget, the actual operationalization of that budget going forward, and understanding how it's conducted throughout. We'd identify all the risks, processes, and controls in identifying and create risk control matrices and flow charts to identify any deficiencies and improvements. Through this, we would be able to identify and pinpoint exactly where the overspend happened. But our second part of our approach would really take a deep dive into payroll, which is your largest expense item. And we would take a very similar approach, that we would do walkthroughs of the overall process to understand all the risks, all the folks that are involved, interviews, and create risk control matrices and flow charts. Again, just being the largest expense item of your income statement, it's worth going through this approach coupled with the overall budgeter process to identify, not only to pinpoint where the overspend occurred, but any improvements going forward and interactions between the town and the Department of Education to ensure this doesn't happen again. We would write an overall report with our findings and include the flow charts and risk control matrices, any policies and procedures recommendations in our overall observations and improvements. Mike, I'll pause there. Anything that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I would just add, as Jim had mentioned, this has been maybe an unfortunate trend that we've been seeing across lines and across different states in New England, where there have been either unpredicted or unforecasted shortfalls. So definitely some areas that we've had experience with. We're in a project right now doing a similar approach. We wrapped one up just very recently that has led to some additional follow-up steps to help further identify where the disconnects are. A lot of times we're finding that it's a... Some things are getting lost in translation and communication, so that information that could be readily available or readily shared isn't making its way across to the various bodies that are responsible for oversight and management. So we believe we have a good approach and a pretty seasoned team to be able to tackle some of these. And of course, our approach would be flexible and customizable, so we're presenting, you know, what we're seeing. But if, obviously, if the town had different thoughts or direction or asks, we can work with that as well. So I just wanted to add that in, Jim.
Yeah, and the next couple of slides are just examples of some of the deliverables that we would present as part of our overall report. We always believe a flow chart is very worthwhile to exercise, as you can see a picture of your processes and all the interdependencies and all the potential control breaks, where we would identify recommendations and improvements. And ultimately, in the next slide, it's memorialized in what we call a risk control matrix, which becomes a living document going forward. A lot of this can help to create training manuals for any change in personnel, as your processes change, as folks change, but it really becomes a living document going forward to really understand your control environment. We'll pause there, see if there's any questions from the council.
Questions? John, Gina, Bob? Okay. Mike, Mayor, I'm sorry, Council Ludwig.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Two quick questions.
Sure.
So I'm looking on your... Oh, that's okay, different proposal, sorry. Curious, are you familiar... So when you say local and state governments, are you familiar with how our budget works as... Yeah, with the Board of Education? Have you done other municipalities? Yeah, I'm just curious if you understand the funding arrangement. You know, we're...
We have.
Sorry, go ahead.
We have, in both the state of Rhode Island and the state of Massachusetts, we have done this exact exercise.
It works in Rhode Island? I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with Rhode Island.
Yes, it's very similar, the interactions and the approvals and the agreements. We would take all those learnings and obviously take them forward for specifically, as Mike had indicated, the specificity of your municipality.
So if there are unique aspects of, you know, town charter arrangements, how things are delineated, of course, you know, there would be some discussion to identify any of those areas where it might be unique or very specific and incorporate that into the review as well.
You... The word "review," will you be documenting the actual process that you investigate? Or maybe, I'm sorry, I don't mean the word "investigate" or "you review."
Yeah.
And then, is then, is the end result, here is what we, to our best of our ability, happened, and here's where, you know, the, sort of, the break in the dam is in a few spots, what, you know?
Yeah.
Is that the theory?
I think...
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we can, we could probably give you a little bit of a flavor for that. So Jim had mentioned there'd be a report, and the report would summarize a number of things, the objectives that we had agreed upon with the town and the school department, and then it would list off an executive summary that would boil up the key issues or trends that we had seen, and there'd then be detailed observations that would follow within the report that would be tied to the work we did, looking at the flow charts and the risk and control matrices that we developed through interviews and review of documentation. So the report would be your roadmap, and then the support for that would be these other deliverables and anything specific that came of it. If there was a specific issue or problem that would be raised, you know, indicating what we noted, what we saw, what we were told, and, you know, the action items that we think would be necessary to remedy that. I'll stop, I know Jim's, you know, probably has some insight as well.
So curious, the majority of municipalities or state governments that hired you, did they... Were you investigating under-budgeting or over-budgeting, or both?
Both. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions down here? I just have one question. One of the things that kept coming up when we did have our joint meetings with them is the grant funding. Are you familiar with how the state of Connecticut does their grant funding for schools?
We have expertise in Connecticut that we would leverage and have subject matter experts as part of our team. We do a number of audits in Connecticut on municipalities. We would leverage that SME as part of our engagement to be sure that we bring all that expertise into the engagement.
Yeah, I think it's important to help, what might help answer that question, very specific in that arena, was the work we did in Rhode Island. We actually worked with and met with the state of Rhode Island to go through their process for allocation, their calculations, and all of the tools and mechanisms that they actually had available to the municipality we were working with. So we counted them as one of the interviewees and did provide, you know, some guidance. While it's available, oftentimes, again, what we found was that not everyone was aware of the tools that are available from the different state agencies or how to properly utilize it. So, you know, we're educating ourselves as well in that process and going through it to make sure we had a complete understanding from the source, and it's definitely something that could be brought to bear. Each, of course, state could be a little bit different in how they welcome or don't welcome third parties such as ourselves, but it was a very productive series of interviews that we had specifically in Rhode Island to get information to pass along to the town we were working with.
Any other questions? Mayor, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, and we will now go to the next auditor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like us to participate any further or drop from the meeting?
You're free to drop from the meeting, or you could stay as your other people still don't listen to you.
Yeah. Okay. Questions at the end, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Give me one second. I wanted...
I'm sorry.
Don't apologize. My name is Jeff Ziplow. I'm one of the principals and would be the engagement principal from CLA, Clifton, Larson Allen, who is the current auditor, if you will. My background, I work in state and local government, probably... Sorry.
Is the light on?
It was, I wasn't talking.
Oh, thank you very much.
Better now?
Yeah.
Okay. I work in state and local government 95% of the time. In Connecticut, although I do work outside of Connecticut, most of my work is here within the state, working with municipalities and school districts throughout the state of Connecticut. As identified in the screen in front of you, and you have the handout, so this handout is associated with me. This would be the engagement team. So Lindsay and Trary would be our engagement director, Aaron Perillo, our senior. The three of us work together on these types of projects, again, throughout Connecticut. I will say, as the auditors mentioned, we're seeing more and more of this. We have a couple of projects right now in Connecticut that have a very similar situation, not in over-budgeting, but not budgeting properly, and they're running into a deficit on the school side, to be honest with you. And then Davis Flint would be our quality assurance principal. I'm skipping through a couple of these slides. I think you know who CLA is, don't need to spend much time on it. I think what I really wanted to do, and I know you're running a bit over because of prior meetings, just give you an overview of our process and what the project looks like to us. We would have an initial planning meeting with you. In that planning meeting, we'd meet with folks from the school district as well, have a joint session, if you will, to talk about what it is we're going to be doing, who we need to talk to and interview, which we'll get into that in a minute. Typically, what we do is we'll provide a memo coming from the superintendent, basically doing some level setting of what this project is all about, providing people that we'll be interviewing with anywhere between five and six questions for them to be prepared for the meeting and prepared for our discussion. We certainly want to have an understanding of what the policies, procedures, and protocols are that are documented, that they follow. And then we have interviews, and we actually do walkthroughs. So we're going to be onsite, meeting with various folks and having interviews. And I want to be clear, Councilman Ludwig, I think you mentioned investigation, we tend not to go down that path because I suspect, and I'll get into some of the details later, I suspect a lot of it has to do with issues with controls, issues with policies and procedures, and to some extent, maybe some communications as well. So we will develop our financial operational assessment procedures so that, once we've gone through these interviews and walkthroughs and we get a good, a better sense of where some of the challenges are, then we put that overall game plan together, look at the various controls that are in place and key processes. So we're process-driven, not the first time you heard that tonight, but we're very process and controls-driven. And then ultimately, we're going to put together a report. That report will identify what the gaps are, what our findings and recommendations are, and will identify where those high-risk areas are. So we want to deal with the high-risk areas first, and then everything else will be prioritized accordingly. Stop there, any questions?
Councilor Ludwig.
So when you talk about interviewing walkthrough, I've been, unfortunately, been to an audit, and they're actually, will you, like, I don't want to say sit with an individual who's process... You know, a PO comes in, or whatever, or they're waiting for a grant, it's processed. Will you folks actually, as opposed to interview, actually sit with that person, see... I mean, it's interesting, because there is, to your pro... It is process-driven, which I'm glad to hear you say that.
Yes.
It's exactly the issue, but it's sometimes you have to actually physically see, be there to see, you know, process A, how it turns into process B, into process C, as opposed to just interviewing somebody.
Correct.
So I'm just curious how far, when you talk about interviewing walkthrough, what does that really mean?
So it's understanding what the standard protocols are that they should be following. Then it's, let's see how you do it in the system.
Thank you.
And then there's the test component.
Yeah.
Because when you think of purchase orders, right? Purchase orders should be going into the system to encumber money.
Right.
If there's a bypass mechanism, that purchase orders are not being put into the system, and the bypass is we're just going to an invoice state, right?
Yep.
So we haven't encumbered the money, that means that people can be putting in a lot of purchase orders, and because, or not putting in purchase orders, monies are not being encumbered, and thus, the surprise when they're over-budget. So it's kind of the walkthrough, the interview walkthrough, and then the validation and test. We want to make sure that what they're doing is, in fact, what the process that they're following.
Thank you, appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Councilor Mangini.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for your time. How would you say your experience as your firm with handling and doing work with Board of Ed budget and Town Council? Because we're somewhat unique in the sense that council oversees and, you know, gives money to the Board of Ed. How much experience does your firm have in understanding that relationship?
I'm Connecticut-based, and 80% of my work is Connecticut, so I understand it quite well, as well as the rest of the project team. So we're located in West Hartford, Connecticut, and the services would be brought through the West Hartford office, and we know how it works. We know how it's supposed to work.
Okay, okay.
Right?
Yeah.
How it works is maybe a different story, but yeah, so we know how it works.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else?
I have one last slide, if you don't mind, and I apologize, but this is the, this is the best slide of them all, other than the picture slide, sorry. So I just wanted to share with you some observations that we have seen from other projects. Certainly budgeting, and understanding what that budgeting process looks like and what the challenges are with the budgeting process. One of the things that we have seen, and again, these are all stories that we can certainly share with you at another time, but, you know, how people budget is really important. Do we just budget from what we had last year and just push it over, or add a 10%, 5%, 2% investment? So we need to understand that. We also need to understand how they manage and track budget to actuals. Are they managing budget to actuals? And so, an area for discussion, to be honest with you, in one of these projects, one of the things that we learned is that they had a minus $2 million line item in a budget. Now, how do you do that? Why do you do that are two very interesting discussions. Again, we can certainly have it, have that discussion later. Purchasing challenges. So are purchases being encumbered, meaning are they going through the standard process? I know that the school district uses Munis, which is the financial management system of both the, of both the town and the school district. Just wanting to make sure that they have an encumbrance process, and in other communities, they have this voucher process where it bypasses all of the controls. Again, I'm not suggesting it here, but these are what we would do from a walkthrough and testing perspective, just to see how things operate. Another area is special ed. Special ed is one of those components that you need to be aware of. How are we budgeting for special ed? How are we tracking it? How are we managing it? And those are things that we need to understand in quite a detailed way. And then a couple of other things, you had mentioned before, it was a question about grants. We need to understand how grants are being monitored and managed. We need to see how people are being aligned with grants for, from a payment perspective. Part of this also is looking at transfers, any major transfers that are going on between line items or within and between grants to better understand that. And last but not least is, are there extensive manual processes that exist that are not being part of or captured as part of the Munis system? Munis is a pretty good financial management system. A number of municipalities in Connecticut and in the Northeast have Munis, we're very familiar with it. Not everyone's using it to its best capacity. So we, as part of this, need to understand how Munis is being used and how it's not being used, what controls are in place, and certainly understand some of the workflows that are, that'll go along with the Munis system. With that, I can end. Any other questions? Sorry.
We're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. We are adjourned.
Okay. We'll just give him...
Yep.
We're good. I would like to welcome everybody tonight to the regular meeting for the Enfield Town Council for October 1st, 2024. With that, may we please stand so that I can do a prayer. Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we start by asking for humility. Whenever ideas are shared, there will always be temptation for us to be proud. We will be tempted to defend our ideas too strongly. We will be tempted to dismiss others' opinions without careful consideration. But we know that God opposes the proud but shows favor to the humble. Help us to approach this meeting with a humble heart, open to hearing and learning from one another. Let your Spirit guide our discussions so that we may come to decisions that are not just based on our own understanding, but also on your wisdom and guidance. We thank you for the reminder to remain humble and to seek unity in all that we do. May this meeting be a reflection of your love and grace. In your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sheila, can we have roll call, please? Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Counselor Russo.
Here.
Counselor Santinella.
Here.
Counselor Angier is absent. Counselor Sikala.
Here.
Counselor Crissati.
Here.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Nasuda.
Here.
And Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Ten members at present, one is absent. With that, I just want to read the fire evacuation. In the event of a fire or an emergency, there are two means of exiting the council chambers. The exit door in the back, walk safely away from the building, or exit through the side doors and go straight down and walk a good distance from the building. With that, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of the adjournments for the special meeting on October 7th, 2024.
So moved.
Are there any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ten in favor. A motion to accept the minutes from the regular meeting on October 7th, 2024.
So moved.
Okay. Any comments, connection, or corrections or concerns? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? None. Okay. We have some special guests tonight. The first one, we have some proclamations we're going to read. So the first one is for the Enfield Public Library and its 150th anniversary, so if you'd like to come up, and if we'd like to stand, or I don't know how we're going to do this. Oh, yeah, you need a microphone. Okay.
Welcome. We have a proclamation recognizing the 150th anniversary of Enfield Public Libraries. Whereas Enfield's first library, the Enfield Library Association, began as a subscription library in 1874. The Enfield Library Association's collection was entrusted to the Enfield Free Public Library on April 11th, 1896, for Enfield's first publicly-funded library. Whereas, the library was housed on the second floor of the town hall, located on North Main Street in Thompsonville. Whereas, John Pickens successfully petitioned Andrew Carnegie for the establishment of a new free public library on Pearl Street in Enfield in 1914. Whereas, Enfield Central Library was dedicated in 1968 to attain humanity's goal, justice and peace through learning. Whereas, the people of Enfield, by their continued use of the libraries, demonstrated the need of such libraries and its success in meeting the wants of the public as measured by library statistics. Whereas, the libraries created welcoming spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another. Whereas, the Enfield Public Libraries provides a variety of books and resources, both digital and physical, to serve everyone in the community, making knowledge and ideas available to that people have the freedom to choose what to read. Whereas, libraries empower all people to pursue their dreams, explore new passions and interests, and find their voice. Whereas, libraries are constantly transforming to deliver new services that connect closely with the community needs. Whereas, the Enfield Public Libraries have served the people of Enfield and the community for 150 years. Now, therefore, I, Ken Nelson Jr., Mayor of the Town of Enfield, on behalf of the Town Council, the Town Administration, and the entire community, do hereby recognize the 150th anniversary of Enfield Public Libraries.
and hope to continue to serve the Enfield community in various capacities. We also invite the public to celebrate our birthday on Saturday, November 9th, at the Enfield Public Library, from 11 to... Nope, sorry, 10 to 2. Enfield Public Library from 10 to 2:00, where there'll be activities for kids and hopefully a celebration with the rest of the community in commemorating the libraries. Let's share those memories and let's celebrate for another 150 years.
I would now like to invite John Langoyce to join me up here, and anyone else that you would like for Enfield Scuba? I'm doing well.
I'll give you a hug.
We go way back, so. This proclamation is recognizing the 20th anniversary of Enfield Scuba and Water Sports. Whereas Enfield Scuba and Water Sports LLC opened on September 7th, 2004. Whereas Enfield Scuba and Water Sports LLC is dedicated to providing their customers with the best driving, diving instruction available. And whereas, Enfield Scuba and Water Sports LLC service does not stop at just booking the trip. They provide personalized service, they travel with you, show you those dive spots you might not find on your own, and if you wish, provide guided tours. And whereas, Enfield Scuba and Water Sports LLC is located at 169 Elm Street, Enfield, Connecticut, and is owned by John D. Langoyce, course instructor. Now therefore, I, Ken Nelson, mayor of the town of Enfield, on behalf of the town council, the town administration, and the entire community, do hereby recognize the 20th anniversary of Enfield Scuba and Water Sports LLC.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Mayor. I just, our support group, I have my lovely wife who has advised and directed me perfectly not only the 20 years that we've been open, but for a lot longer than that. So thank you. My manager, John Glenn, who has been with me since the day we opened, he's teaching me stuff now. So, I know. And we have Laura Seese, who is our staff instructor and social media person. So you're all going to be on our Facebook tomorrow. So, and I just want to say what an honor this is and to be a part of Enfield. The town is a real attribute to our business. Logistically, it's just fit perfect. And I want to thank everybody. And I'm going to end with some words my attorney told me, who I won't mention his name, but he said, "We're the only business he knows that started underwater, and after all these years, we're still there."
I'm going to take one second. I think what a lot of people don't know about you is you go above and beyond. And you're just starting something now with the state of Connecticut that's going to start helping to clean up some of our lakes. And I think that's awesome. You work really very closely with the state police in helping them. So I've known John for a long time, and I know it goes above and beyond just Enfield Scuba and Water Sports. So I thank you, and I think your business is a great asset to our town.
And thanks again to everyone.
Okay. So with that, we are now going to open up.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. You're right. Okay. We now have Erin Markowitz. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I'm here tonight with two of the members of the Design Preservation Rapid Assistance Team, who has spent all day downstairs in the Skidco Room, meeting with a variety of people about our community. I don't know if one of you wants to be here. Take your pick. We're really thrilled to have them here. Chris Kreider is from Virginia, and Shannon Solento is from upstate New York. And we have people, planners, who have come in from San Francisco, California, Florida, so all over the place, who have come in. And we took a three-hour walk around Thompsonville, learned everything we could about Thompsonville, met with probably 60-plus people at this point, really to take their input. And I will say that anybody who might be watching out there, maybe this evening, early tomorrow morning, who haven't had a chance to give input on the future of Thompsonville and some of the opportunities we have there, they do have a chance tomorrow between 1:00 and 3:00 to come in individually and meet with this group and give them their input. It has been a fantastic program. Chris, I don't know if you wanted to say a couple things?
And we will be wrapping up with a session tomorrow that will be streamed. So we're very thankful for being welcomed into town. Everybody we've met has been very, very pleasant and polite. They've got a lot of opinions, but we, that's why we're here. And I want to personally thank the deputy mayor. She came down and helped us post up some of our visual preference survey. So thank you. And everybody has just been really great. Our plan is, we're here for two days gathering a lot of information, asking questions, getting input from folks. The next two months, we'll be working to put together what we call an idea book. This is not a plan. We're not experts. We're here to hear from you, put your ideas, and then help illustrate them. So this is a great opportunity for people to share their ideas, and we're going to do our best to put it together. After the holidays, we'll be wrapping up towards this report towards the end of January. We'd love to come virtually back and share with you the ideas that we have. But thank you once again for bringing us this great opportunity to work in your community.
And I'll just add one other item to that is, is that this is not to be another plan about Thompsonville. We have a bookshelf full of them. This is about taking some of those ideas and making them actionable, things that I can go out and apply for grant funding for, things that we can sell to developer partners and find ways of doing things, things that we can do in the community. You know, how can we make a better boat launch park area? You know, what could we do in that kind of area? There has been this long dream of the fishing pier out over onto the old bridge abutment. You know, some of those kind of concepts that have been around, these folks are going to visualize. How can we infill Main Street and bring back some of those pieces? These folks are going to visualize it. So it's been a really fantastic program down there, and we have a lot of hard work tomorrow that they're going to be continuing on. But again, if somebody is watching this before Tuesday, the 22nd of October, they are welcome to come at 1:00, 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock down in the Skidco Room, and we'd be happy to take your input there. Okay? Happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
Anybody?
Great.
Okay. I just want to say thank you. Did you want to say something? Okay. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure.
Thanks, Erin.
So with that, I will now open it up to public communications. First, let me say, any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had a chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communications, Item 7 on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to two rounds, eight minutes. During public communications, Term 16 on the agenda, if prior to 11:00 p.m., each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communications shall be limited to one hour unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not to individual employees. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct and shall refrain from personalities and improper language. So with that, is there anyone who would like to come up for the first time? Zach's hand went up first, so you're going to go first.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Zach Sinoni, 6 Howard Street, Enfield, Connecticut. I have a less serious thing to bring before you today, but I think it's nonetheless important. I had the opportunity to go down in the Skidco Room to partake in the redevelopment workshop, and I had crossed the Enfield Room in which I had seen the photos of the council, which go back to the 1960s. And it was my understanding that for many years, we had those photos up here in the foyer and in the council chamber. And I think since the 1960s, when we transitioned from a select board and we went from paid individuals in elected office to volunteering, the recognition that you all get and those who preceded you is quite minimal. And one of the few things that we do continue and have done is we used to have our photos of the council framed as well as the placards. And so every individual who was elected to serve this body is there, and it is in a room relegated to the basement that nobody sees. And our town manager is not here tonight, but hopefully it could be brought to his attention because I think they belong up here for public view, not only for young people like me who don't remember those days, but for anyone to come back and be able to take pride in those who are willing to volunteer for our highest governing body. I think that should come back up to the council chambers and the foyer. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Melissa?
Maureen Griffin, 98 Abbey Road. I'm here to speak about the moving of plans for the school modernization to DPW. No shade throwing at DPW. They're fine with building maintenance, but they are not educators. They are not aware of all the ins and outs. That's why there was a school modernization committee, which was, provided it with a great deal of background. And I want to bring forward one background issue that I think is most important. The schools were built before FERPA. If you're not familiar with that, that's a body of legislation that says every child has a right to a public education in their home school in the least restrictive environment whenever possible. And the district must provide supports in order to enable that child to do so. There's not a single child that does not have a challenge to learning. The most common ones are addressed just by the way teachers teach. When you get into the more uncommon ones, the more complex ones, that's where you see IEPs, 504s, and very strict laws about how these children have rights. They have a right to any supports that they need. That can be a nurse at their side at all times. That can be a para. That can be physical therapy during the school day. That can be occupational therapy. That can be feeding assistance. That can be toileting assistance. That can be extra time with a specially trained special education teacher. All this didn't exist when these buildings were built, because that was before the days of even mainstreaming. And most of you probably remember mainstreaming as the kids having their own little wing or their own little classroom, and that's where they stayed. You might have seen them go in or out. That's it. That is not what it is anymore, because that does not prepare the child for life, because their life is not lived in a room off to the side. Their life is lived amongst everyone. So those children are in amongst our students, as they should be, the children learning about them and the children needing the extra assistance, getting the assistance that they need. There are regulations regarding square footage per child. This is not stuff that DPW is going to know. This is stuff that was brought forward by the professionals in education when we worked on the plan. To just throw away the plan and say, "Well, it's only 40 million to do this," but that only 40 million has already been determined by DPW as we were making the program, as this is the bare minimum that these buildings need to keep limping along. The bare minimum. That does nothing to address security, improved security, does nothing to address HVAC issues, nothing. It makes no progress towards meeting the needs that are truly there, and it also does not allow for, once you open those walls, finding out a whole lot more things that are, may well bring their costs up. And that 40 million is 100% on the Enfield taxpayer. The program that the Modernization Committee came up with is more. The local taxpayer burden was approximately 48 million, if I recall correctly. But the value of that is at least three times as large, which is covered by the state. Yes, we all pay state taxes. That money is paid into a fund that is sitting there waiting to be used to build schools. We're paying into it. We should be taking the money out to provide for the future. The plan that was presented is a 10-year look forward, demographic studies. What?
30 seconds.
Okay. It's a short sighted, one-budget cycle thing to just go, "Okay, we're going to save the money and just go 40 million, have DPW do it." It's not thinking about the future of our town.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? George?
There were numerous items discussed on October 18th, 24, at the General Government and Finance Subcommittee Meeting. I know some of these items are being discussed this evening, but I would like to also hear the results of the discussion from the finance update on current tax collections. It seems that those answers would tie in nicely with today's, tonight's project and activities report on Page 18, that discusses the personal property letters that were sent to all business owners, farmers, and/or owners of unregistered motor vehicles, of whom we are aware. That is such a passive act, as I have mentioned for years. You would be much more aware if someone drove down some streets and actually looked for non-Connecticut vehicles. There are enough people who have moved here since October 1st a year ago and should be reporting their personal property if they're not registered on the declaration form. In sticking with tonight's PAU report, we need to talk about the veterans' service-connected disability and the need for them to be permanently and totally disabled to have their dwelling exempt. I think that is a great idea. Now we need to talk about increasing the non-disabled veterans exemption. The state passed Public Act 03-44 back in 2003 with subsequent changes. There have been mandatory exemptions provided in the law for property taxes. I'm not going to detail now as to what those exemption amounts are, except to say that by law, there is a mandatory exemption. The limits for income must be adjusted annually to reflect the increase in Social Security benefits. And the exemption must be increased to reflect increases in taxable grand lists following revaluation. It's been a while since we had our revaluation and an increase in our grand list. I have not heard or seen an increase for any veteran exemption. I can refer you to OLR Research Report dated September 26, 2003, which is 2003-R-0689. Could someone follow up on this question with the assessor's office? Perhaps I've missed an update. This evening on the agenda is Item 13H, which I have a comment on. It's a resolution authorizing senior volunteer tax program fiscal year 2026. For those unaware, the volunteer service performed in calendar 24 will be part of the July 1, 25-June 30, '26 budget year. As a member of the Senior Tax Volunteer Tax Committee, I am obviously for this program. There is a second part, which is the amount of money that the cost of the program that will be paid by taxpayers. As one of those, I believe that based on last year's number of qualified participants at $400 each, the cost was less than $80,000. I see no need to budget 25% more money in the coming '26 fiscal year. We should not get 25% more qualified applicants, which is an increase from two, under 200 people from last year to 250 for the calendar year 2024. I would ask a council person to amend this resolution to reduce the cost of the program to a reasonable amount of $80,000 and save some of the fiscal '26 budget and mil rate. There needs to be conservation or conservatism at some point. Perhaps the register of voters could use that $20,000. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else want to speak to council first?
from last year to 250 for the calendar year 2024. I would ask a council person to amend this resolution to reduce the cost of the program to a reasonable amount of $80,000 and save some of the fiscal '26 budget and mil rate. There needs to be conservation or conservatism at some point. Perhaps the register of voters could use that $20,000. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else want to speak to council first? Walter?
Walter J. Cruzell, 21 Charmley Road, former member, volunteer member of the Board of Education and also board chairman. I made it larger. Started with eight and a half by 11. Maybe ETV can zoom in on it. Started with eight and a half by 11, then I went to tabloid. I don't see this line drop anywhere. There is no drop in this line. And these are all verified numbers that I spent a day in the vault to get older budget books that I paid for, copies I paid for. As a volunteer, I paid for this. I paid to get this done. I paid for whiteboards. I paid for weights to get repainted. I paid for it. So I just wanted to make it larger so you guys can all see. There is not one drop in these lines. Everything is up. So we cannot cut the school budget. It's against the law. We haven't never cut the school budget. We may have funded a flat. There is a flat here back in 2010, 2012. And then the blue line is where we would be if the town didn't take over the buildings. And I just want to stress that. So I will roll this back up, and I will leave this as a gift to somebody, whoever wants it, to show that we never cut the school budget. The state cut us one year. I was on the board when that happened, and we had the town funded us. So then I do remember that the state cut us. So if I added another line with the state funding, I'm for sure there would be a drop there. But we won't go that technical. So I'll start on this end, and I'll leave it for somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Is there anyone else for the first time?
Merry Christmas.
Joe?
Joe Golis, Jr., 31 Stardust Drive, in the town of Enfield, Connecticut, District 1. Ken Nelson, not presiding today, Maria's. My comment, because it's this close to election, is about science. I've got a degree in chemistry, biology. I've got an associate's in engineering. And so I lay it out. When I always say that because folks say, "Well, you're like the movie Dodgeball. You're just average Joe." Yeah, I have to live with that, okay? But I'm not average. Solar panels. Let's start efficiency, okay? Efficiency for a gas-fired power plant or a Cogen plant, which uses gas and/or coal, is 50, sometimes 60, depends on the generation, sometimes 80%. What do we mean by efficiency? You go to a grocery store, you buy five oranges, and you can only eat one because four are damaged? That's efficiency. If you can eat four out of five, that's 80%. That's efficiency, measured on that. So what are solar panels? Solar panels started out 20 years ago at 8% efficient. They are photovoltaics. They're made with silicon. You know what they are now? 22% efficient, meaning the solar panels out in the fields that we put them out there can only provide wattage 22%. Why are they only 22% efficient? Because they have, and you'll enjoy this, Jim, I'm sure, PID, Potential Induced Degradation, which means they get degraded by the potential. What is the potential? That is voltage, all right? Electricity flowing is not voltage. It is amperage, all right? When you talk about watts, watts are power. What is power? It's force times distance times time. That's how we measure electricity. But voltage, which means we've got to get the electricity to flow from a high to a low voltage. Voltage, and how would you have a problem with voltage? Because you either put the panels in on series, which means they're in a line like soldiers, or you put them in in parallel where there's two lines of soldiers, all right? Parallel is a weaker way to generate the electricity, but you won't have voltage problems. What could be a voltage problem with the panels sitting out in the field? How about a lightning strike? Just one. That's all you need. How about it hits the inverter? That's all you need. It hits the inverter, there goes the whole field. How is it science that we put something outside to generate electricity? Are you going to take your laptop outside in the winter? Again, pseudoscience, I'm going to push back on pseudoscience. Shade, design, and balance, and so forth, reduce efficiency in terms of a solar panel. Now wind turbines, I won't even get into, oh, well, their efficiency starts at 60%, 59%. Starts at a brand-new wind turbine. I'm just going to go very quickly into how that wind turbine magnetic, which controls it, you spin a magnetics, you generate electricity. That magnetic is not made from iron and nickel like we were used to with the magnets. It's made from neodymium and samarium, very expensive metals, not because there are very few of them.
Joe, 30 seconds.
30 seconds? Thank you, Cindy. And it's also made from, and in order to put them together, you have to have a very expensive process and a very chemically destructive process to the environment. Good luck with putting wind turbines out in the middle of the ocean.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else that would like to come for the first time before council? Anyone else coming? Okay, council communications is now over.
Second? Second time?
I'm sorry, second time. I apologize. I'm new at this. Okay, Zachary, I'm sorry. Come on up.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Zexon 06 Howard Street. I wanted to respectfully disagree with the conversation regarding education funding. I chat with my Republican friends a lot, and they often mention a very important word in this election, and that's called inflation. And the idea is your wages can go up, but if the cost of living exceeds that, that impacts your ability to maintain the quality of life that you have. I think it's a basic economic concept. And while I appreciate that very informative chart, if you were to index that to the rate of inflation over the past 10 years, you would see where the Board of Education budget should be today is about $10 to $15 million below. Because at the end of the day, the increases that the council allocated to the Board of Education have not kept up with the rate of inflation. So if the Board of Education can't maintain the services that it provides today, tomorrow, I consider that a cut to education. Even if you're increasing the overall dollar amount, if it doesn't provide the same services, I think that's a cut. And at the end of the day, it's the council's discretion to make those decisions. And I understand there's challenging times that force people to have to make tough decisions about the budget. But to argue that because the state prohibits a theoretical dollar cut to the Board of Education budget doesn't mean that increasing spending automatically results into an increased investment to the Board of Education. We're all living with inflation. We know that is not true. And so I disagree with that perspective. I understand it. But especially in the past two to three years with what has happened in regards to cost of living, we know that if we are not making investments in exceeding the rate of inflation, it's a cut to the quality of life and the services that we can provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Anyone wanting to come up? Maureen?
Maureen Griffin, 98 Abbey. That plan that I was talking about, it also used a demographic study paid for by the council, feasibility study paid for by the council, that looked at the buildings. And we looked at the projected needs, the projected numbers, and looked at the buildings. Couple were not viable for repair, for reuse, so make them into parks or sell the property. The other ones are viable for repair for other uses than what they currently are because they will not meet what the kids need. And the plan showed what to do. There's two programs within the district that are income-producing. Eagle Academy, which works with the children who cannot, due to their highly specialized needs, cannot be educated in the standalone schools. They have to have a specialized school. Our Eagle Academy is at capacity with a waiting list. Other districts do not have these facilities, and they have to outplace their students. If we increase Eagle Academy, this capacity of it, we could move that into one of those buildings because they are not primary level, so they don't need the same square footage. Increase the capacity of Eagle Academy, and that would be an income-producing stream because there's lots of districts looking for, outplacements are very hard to find a placement for the child. So that's an income stream. The Child Development Center, expanding that, an income stream because people need childcare and they'll pay for it. That plan was not pulled out of the ether. It was extremely well thought out with data driven by the people that actually understand the law and what is happening with the children's needs at this point. To just say, "We don't like it," again, good for one budget cycle. Maybe it'll get you elected one more time. It's not meeting the needs of the children. It's very short-sighted, and that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else for a second time? Donna's hand went up.
Donna Dubinowski, 23 Betty Road. All right, so regarding the schools, nobody cut. We hadn't, the budget was overspent, and you guys were nice enough to give the Board of Ed another $6 million. So we've given the Board of Ed more than what they should have spent of $75 million. We gave them $85 million, and we're still complaining. So I guess we'll never know what the exact amount is. That's the perfect amount for any type of education. The other thing on the agenda is you're talking about FEMA and the Hazard Mitigation Plan. I know that the original one was in 2019 to 2024, and it did not include anything about climate change. Now, if we want to talk about climate change, we should talk about how we're cloud seeding and we're actually changing geoengineering the weather with silver potassium iodide. So if we didn't put that into the system or into the air and change, what's happening in the stratospheric atmosphere, we probably wouldn't have to worry about climate change because it is man-made, but we're creating it by sending up and geoengineering and cloud seeding. So maybe we should look into that. I don't know what this agreement is that you're going to sign, but I don't know when the 2023 public hearings were and who was in charge at that time, and if our new town manager might want to relook into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone for a second time again? Joe?
Okay, a couple of things. One, oh, I need the name again. Joe Golis, Jr., District 1, town, the town of Enfield. Although we loved Springfield and Hartford, when I was growing up, they were great cities. But they minded their own business. Not anymore. Number one, I saw a newspaper saved 1973. My brother had saved it. It was about the Boston Red Sox or something. He's a Yankees fan. I don't know why he saved it. But anyways, I saw all the politics going on. And what I noticed in the '70s and '80s, we weren't, we were Democrat. We were conservative. The greatest governor we ever had wasn't because she was a woman. It was because it was El Agasso from Windsor Locks, conservative. That's the way we applied our finances. That's the way we lived our lives. What I'd like to talk about for this coming up is abortions on the election. This gentleman here fighting for life is Bob Casey. He was the governor of Pennsylvania. He got rejected on the Democratic National Convention. He's a Democrat, a very hard, he's a pro-life Democrat. What happened was they put together back in 1999 what's called Whole Life, which means pro-life for whole life, which means, here's their agenda briefly. Love is stronger than hate. Science is real. Human rights begin in the womb. No human is illegal. Pro-life for whole life. That was Democrats, it wasn't Republicans. Americans United for Life, and now they have, still have, to this day, Democrats for Life America, DFLA, which is what Trini, I forget her last name, but she's down on the coast. She's a Democrat, and she appears at our pro-life rallies. On top of that, they've added Black Lives Matter, feminism is for everyone. That's a tough one for me. I'm not, sorry, but it's tough. And they added those two things. And basically, that doesn't make for a working formula if you add certain things to that agenda because you're saying that race matters, the color of your skin matters, if you do that, and so forth. So I'd like you to think about that.
I'll set, Joe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for a second time? Anyone else? Okay, so now public communications is over. Thank you. Now we move into councilor communications. I'm going to start down with John. Do you want to go first, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I did, a couple weeks ago, I came into our meeting. I had a question, and I think through the mayor to either the town attorney or the town manager. I'm not exactly sure where to go with this. I have a bunch of residents who have an animal infestation problem in their neighborhood. One of the neighbors is leaving food out to feed the animals all hours of the day and night. There are numerous skunks, coyotes, and things coming in to the neighborhood. Over the weekend, they called me, very upset. They had to call Animal Control. Either the, some of the skunks are rabid or have distemper. It's creating a huge menace there. We don't have an ordinance about feeding animals. Is that correct? I just...
I think you may have brought it up at the meeting.
It was very brief, and we weren't really sure, but it... It was very brief and we weren't really sure, but it's gotten worse and so.
I don't recall ever seeing an ordinance that addresses the issue that, directly that you said, no. But I wasn't there at the meeting that you must have brought up. I think that's the meeting I missed where perhaps Mark was here, but to my knowledge, we don't have an ordinance like that at this point.
So what, I'm looking for some suggestions on how to help these folks. It's not just one house. It's a number of houses that are having this chronic problem. We don't have to have an answer right now. I just, if you could help me, we can maybe talk tomorrow. I just need to have some way of kind of giving these people some relief. It's, it's, so, and one of the neighbors has actually put poison out to kill the skunks, but that's creating a whole nother set of health and safety issues. I don't know if we have a Health Department claim here. I just need some help to help this neighborhood.
Well, I could check with the Police Department, but I was going to ask if you checked with the Health District to see if they have any guidelines or.
So I know that the neighbors have called the Health District. I know that they've reached out to Animal Control. We're not going to dissolve, we're not going to resolve it here. I just, I need some help or some guidance for these folks because the problem is just getting worse and worse for them. So if we can.
And this is not atypical to Enfield. I saw on the news how torrenting, they tore down a building and there were rats everywhere. West Hartford had issues, so this is an issue that's concerning a lot of.
Yeah, so Steve, I do know that if it was rat infestation, there's, there is a Health Department remedy for that, but I don't know that it applies to all these other things. So I just can't, I just can't find a way to help these folks. So there's, that's number one. The other thing, just a little bit more lighthearted. So I know that we have, at Christmas time, we go around and we recognize people who decorate their house for Christmas time. So I just happen to have an opportunity to be walking around a lot lately and there are some people who do an amazing job decorating their homes for Halloween. Like they just go all out for it and it's very fun. Some of it's very creative and very festive. I'm wondering if, and this is just for the council maybe to consider, but could we do the same thing for Halloween that we do for Christmas and allow people to nominate neighbors who do an outstanding job decorating for Halloween and give them some kind of recognition? And believe it or not, those are the only two things I have tonight. Thank you.
Gina? Counselor Crissati.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. And, you know, John, with the Halloween atmosphere in the air, once again, a street that would probably get a lot of awards is probably Sun Street. You know, if you haven't had the opportunity to go to Sun Street, go to Sun Street, you'll enjoy it. Several houses there do a fantastic job, but that's once again throughout the, our town of Enfield. Through the deputy mayor to the assistant town manager, Mr. Belinda, it's come to my attention, we have an individual, Mr. James Malley, who does walking tours here in town. And one of his tours, his, they go through the, one of his tours was down in the Parsons Road Boat Launch, okay? And down in that area is the Angelo Spazza Memorial Park. And there is a walking path. And he contacted me to say that that walking path in that area really needs some work. So if we could have somebody take a look at that, there's a lot of overgrowth, especially over these past couple of weeks, the weather has been fantastic. There's a lot of hikers that are walking down by the river and whatever paths that are available here in town, but that has to be cleaned up. It's a park. It needs to be addressed. You know, people walk along there and actually they, they walk south. There's an actual railroad bridge that people walk to. All right, so if we could take a look at that. And the other thing, believe it or not, you know, here we are, Brainerd Park is coming up again. And I received a few phone calls regarding dogs. We have a dog park and there's a lot of people that are braying their dogs and letting them loose and they're on the fields. And that is not acceptable. So I would like to see some signs down on, especially the new fields or all the fields down there, keep the dogs off the parks. They don't have to do their duty on the fields. It's absolutely ridiculous. When I heard that, I became pretty upset to even think that we don't even have signs down there. So that goes for really any fields, even soccer fields, all right? You know, kids don't need to be playing. Next thing you know, there's, you know, something that should have been picked up, you know, by the owner. But people have dogs and they want to go play around and let their dogs loose, they can go to the dog park. Okay, so those were a couple of things that I just wanted to, to mention in regard to that. And I'll wait for a little later on in the meeting to talk about a couple of other things, but thank you.
Okay, thanks. Councilor Maureen Jeany?
Thank you. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We haven't ended this month yet, so I just wanted to bring it forward to people to please recognize the fact that it is a very serious illness. And if we can pay more attention and support those that have breast cancer or have had it, it's extremely important to recognize. Also, the Jack-o'-lantern event this weekend was phenomenal. There were tons of children with their families and it was really refreshing to see that. It has grown so much. They had the hayride, they had the bounce house. Kids were having a great time. It was really, really refreshing to see that. Also, coming up, we've got Truck and Treat and Phil PD. It's going to be October 30th, day before Halloween, between 5:00 and 7:00, Town Hall Green. There's going to be pizza, candy. Children are asked to, you know, wear their costumes and thoroughly enjoy the event. Finally, but not last, I want to wish our dear former mayor, Mr. Bob Crissati, happy birthday. It's tomorrow.
Yeah. I smelled my thunder, I was going to do the same thing.
Yep, yep. So happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you.
And that's it. Thank you.
Jim?
Okay, first, on behalf of the Enfield Veterans Council, want to remind everyone that the Veterans Day Parade will be on November 10th, starting at 1:00, from Enfield Street School down to the green with a short ceremony on the green afterwards. And the speaker to share is Navy, so even though, Navy guy, but anyways, and he's from Enfield. So 1:00, just want to encourage people to come out and support our veterans. And the second thing, I know this has been brought up before, but through the deputy mayor to the assistant town manager, the Civil War Monument, there's a birch tree in front of it. I know we can't cut down a birch tree, but maybe we could look at, maybe trimming, trimming it up a little bit. And it was brought up at the Veterans Council, so something maybe we could look at, but I know we can't cut it, but.
I could talk to the tree warden to see what we can do.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Counselor Russo?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. To piggyback on Councilwoman Crissati's remarks regarding signs, just to add, been some golfers, Mark Twain and Shaker. I think every time we kick them off Shaker, they move over to Mark Twain. Been getting a lot of pictures of people chipping and putting and driving. So anyways, just wanted to bring that up. I think since the North Street, the driving range closed down. I think there's a little bit of void and people are kind of using our public recreational facilities and that's a, that's a big no-go. We've actually found some golf balls on the soccer fields, which is obviously very dangerous. That's kind of an ankle twister. So if we could add that for the signs. And then I really liked that idea about recognizing houses that go above and beyond for, for Halloween for decorating. Hopefully, they still have some money left over for full-size candy bars. Just let me know what streets I need to hit, all right? And then I want to recognize, I want to give a shout out to the Police Explorers. So Cindy mentioned the busy weekend with the Jack-o'-lantern Festival on Saturday night, Town Green right over here. And they are also, the Explorers were out at Soccer Mania all day at Shaker Field yesterday. So I was fortunate to watch them. It was impressive to watch them work as a team, handle traffic, congestion, parking issues. They were professional, had positive attitudes and displayed good problem-solving skills. We definitely have some future leaders in our town with those Police Explorers. It's a great program. Kudos to Lieutenant Willie Pinamonte and his staff. They're running a great Explorer program over at the PD. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Hendrickson?
All right, usually I don't bring these up, but through the deputy mayor to the assistant town manager, I had a freshman at Enfield High School come to me today. He rides his bike on Elm Street. He appreciates the sidewalks, but when the green light to cross at Palumba comes on for them to go across, the left-hand turn, people coming out of Palumba onto Elm Street, they proceed. So it's going to get somebody hit, I believe. Or he believes it. He just sees the green light, if you see it, coming from the north side there. I know it's a state road, but he brought it up, so I figured I would bring it to the attention that it is kind of confusing for them trying to cross there when traffic's coming at them. Also, Sun Street, great Halloween thing, and they do donations, go to the food shelves, so I wanted to throw that out there also, so it's a good program over there. John, on your problem with skunks and everything over there, I want to help you out with that. We had a problem with foxes in my neighborhood and they were coming after me for how to fix that. I will say that feeding them seems to be illegal. Nobody really wants to touch it. The state, I was directed to the state and they kind of threw me no help at all, so it is a problem. I will say that the coyote that did come in seemed to solve the problem with the foxes and skunks pretty quickly. So I would approve the coy, the coyotes are the way to go. The coyotes are definitely the way to go on that. Don't chase away the coyotes is my best piece of advice there. To the town attorney, I asked about the work program for the inmates. I didn't know if we got anything on that.
Actually, I think that it's beyond our jurisdiction because the, it's the state inmates and it's a private individual or entity that's doing it. So we don't have any jurisdiction over them to make them apply for any permits or anything of that nature. To the best of my knowledge, we don't have any right now and I don't know how we could do it because we're, we're a town, they're the state and so I.
So the town would have no working.
We have no power right now.
Okay. Thank you on that.
I do think the way to do it might be through the state, through the Department of Correction to put some restrictions that way on, because the state certainly, and Department of Correction has power that we don't have. And perhaps they can consider the community where these activities are going to take place. And for safety purposes, I think that's probably the way to go. In other words, trying to answer your problem to get you a solution, but the solution for the town to do something, we're powerless. But the state and Department of Correction.
Right, so there'd be no working agreement with us. It would just be, they would.
Correct.
Have to do with the facility or wherever they're working on.
Yeah.
Like the cemeteries or something.
Yes.
Would be there. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Counselor Ludwig?
Okay, so I just have just a couple of things. I too, Jack-o'-lantern festival, thank you to all the businesses that sponsor it. They do a great job. The kids were great. Sanderson Sisters were there this year. They were a blast. They entertained. I also got to volunteer on, in the morning over at the Annex for the Falling Into Fun Kids. I've done this the last three years. It's the Friends of the Library as well as Kite and the Recreation Department. And it's just, they collaborate so greatly together. The kids come, the big blue blocks, they have such a wonderful time. I wish it was something we could do on a more regular basis because it's just a great, great event with the kids. They have a blast doing it. And I too was going to wish Bob a happy birthday. I would sing, but everybody would leave, so that's not going to happen, but. Okay, so on to our mayor.
Okay, just a couple of things. First, Rotary is having their annual dinner Wednesday night at 6:00 PM. And they are actually recognizing a previous council member, Joe Mueller. And I just want to congratulate him. And, you know, he's donated so much of his personal time for Enfield and he is getting an award for it Wednesday night. So if you can attend, please do. Congratulations, Joe. We really appreciate everything you do for our town. Next, Councilwoman Crissati, I couldn't agree with you more about the dogs on the fields. I brought this up probably a year and a half ago. It's not right, whether it's football, soccer or baseball, when a child slides in the grass and slides through some dog feces because the owner's too lazy to pick it up, it's just wrong. And that is one of the reasons I supported locking down the new synthetic fields at the high school because it was happening there, there, and we need to stop it. The fields are for the children. They should use it and not have to worry about where they step when they're in the middle of a game. And lastly, I also want to wish Mayor Crissati a happy birthday and I hope you have a great time with your family. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, moving on, we are going to go to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So a few things. We did have the guest tonight of Paul Russell showing us the town website, but he is battling the same affliction as our town manager is and everyone else seems to be. Chris did come in today. He thought he was going to make it, but he's still battling. So suffice it to say, I am filling in for him. Thank you for being easy on me. Although he can't be here in person and he will be here in a highlight reel, which we do want to show you. The recent Business Breakfast with the Governor Lamont, Congressman Joe Courtney, the town manager and mayor. We had Aaron Markovich and our ETV crew, Alex Keiner and Josh Warnock, put together a one-minute thing that we do want to show you that highlighted some of the best parts of that day. So if you can roll it, Alex?
Welcome, everybody, to the 2024 Enfield Business Breakfast.
Enfield is a town with great history, filled with people who have strong pride in our community.
So Enfield is a place to be. What I like to say is it's a Goldilocks. This seat's too big, this seat's too small. Enfield, we're just right, right? We're the perfect size.
So Enfield really is contributing, you know, in terms of just so many sectors. Enfield really is a very unique place, in my opinion. I'm thrilled and excited that Enfield is not just great in and of itself, but it is great because it is part of the wider state and where we're able to plug in.
What we're doing in terms of expanding our downtown areas. And I love your rail station in Bigelow and I see that all fitting together. I think that's a vision that makes, you know, really good sense for where we got to go. Enfield is the gateway to Connecticut and I want to make sure that people realize that and see it when they come into town.
Enfield means business.
As you can see, absolutely. That was professionally done by our own staff here and we want to ride this wave. And for any business that's here or we're trying to attract to come to Enfield, we have snippets like this that we can show them what we're up, what we're doing. Next, let's see, Public Service Announcement. There was some chatter in the forums, which I don't visit, but apparently other people do, regarding early voting started today in the town and the state of Connecticut. There were some concerns that some of our ballot boxes are not being videotaped. That's wrong. All three of our ballot boxes are videotaped at the library here and at Enfield Express. The cameras are very vividly clear with a zoom lens, so we are following the law. So if anyone is hearing chatter, please help squelch that. We adhering to the law. And I too, I want to echo the sentiment of. squelch that. We adhering to the law. And I too, I want to echo the sentiment of Cynthia Mangini and Mary Pizner, as far as the Jack-o'-lantern Festival. I was one of the judges with Captain Police, Captain Jim Howell that night. I was really impressed with how elaborate that was. That was my first one. And I was a little stressed with the, with the judging because everyone did a great job. But, you know, we only had 20 to pick from. I recruited my wife, and the captain recruited his wife to help us. But I really had enjoyed it. I'm ready to have a standing invite for next year, so I will be there. And last, I'll never forget, Mayor, I'll never forget town call for Bob Crissati's birthday because we share the same birthday. So happy birthday, Bob. Thank you. I'm a little younger, though.
Happy birthday, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Ludwig.
Deputy Mayor, since you brought it up, so curious, I know because we asked this, the video, the video camera, I asked this, I think, two years ago, that they're on it with Sheila, but just who's monitoring the footage? So, so I guess what if something happens, right? So let's say someone comes in and pushes it over, or stuff in ballot, whatever, whatever you've seen, like in Bridgeport, for example, who monitor and who's responsible if someone says something says? Maybe that's one way of, you know, limiting the chatter.
Sure. If I had received a complaint, or if I saw a really unusual activity or odd ballots in the drop box, you know, I mean, all of you know that they're all serial numbered. So if I get any back that don't match my serial numbers, we have the footage. We just signed a contract with the company. Initially, we had 90 days of footage. We now have a year of footage. So, and I'm telling you, it is clear as a bell. I can tell if you have at me, you know, by zooming it in. And it's not just, it's not just myself that has access to it. It is the IT department as well.
No, thank you.
And we can save the footage if we saw anything.
You saw something, like during early voting, you saw someone, you saw something. So again, learning from the last election where standing wasn't granted, which again is silly. But, so my point is, what if we did see something before November 5th, or even, how does that rectify itself?
If anyone saw anything and reported to me, and I reviewed the footage and agreed that this was something going on, I am a mandatory reporter. I have to report it to state election enforcement. And I do want to kind of point out, just to give Enfield kudos, the law that says that each ballot box has to be videoed doesn't become effective until July 1st of 2025. We're ahead of the game. We already did it. So.
Thank you. I know we've had this discussion, so I'm glad. Since you asked the question, I just wanted to let folks know that-
Sure.
You know, I mean, I think we are, knowing things go on all over the country, that, again, look, election integrity is the most important thing. So thank you.
Okay. We're good?
That's all.
We are on to the town attorney's report.
Thank you very much. And, you know, it's funny because I had noticed a strong resemblance between Bob Crissati and Steve Belinda. So I'm wondering now if they're twins, just born different mothers. That's the only thing I could, that's what I could figure out. But congratulations, happy birthday to the both of you.
Thank you.
Okay. So my report is on, basically, I'm going to digress a little bit because one of the things that I believe it was Councilman Crissati talked about was Angelo Sforza and the walkway for Angelo. And Angelo, in case a lot of people don't know, is Carlos Sforza's, I think, half-brother. And he's the first Enfield person to die in Vietnam War. And that was a big deal way back when. It still is a big deal. And to think that his memory is not honored by keeping the passageway and path cleared is concerning to all of us. I do have a suggestion, which is perhaps the Public Works Subcommittee of the Council might want to put together a list of not just Angelo's, but other war heroes, or pathways or whatever that we have in town, and just give it to Public Works because I know they have their standing work orders where people would go and, and clear paths and so on. And that would be a good way of serving the memory for, for all those people and the families that are still around. Okay, to get back to my report, mine's on the Siding Council and the solar panel project on Abbey Road and Town Farm Road. We submitted our, our briefs and, for findings of fact, and the staff of the Siding Council was very disappointing in that they basically bought everything from Loadstar and their brief, and nothing from us or the intervenors. We did have an opportunity to comment on that, and Jeff Mermon did a nice job of commenting to show where we document the sources of what we said for, for findings of facts and so on. And we think that, he filed that back last, on December, excuse me, October the 16th. It must have ruffled some feathers because Loadstar's attorney then shot off a letter the next day to the Siding Council, Chief Executive Director and Chief of Staff, Michelle Bachmann, pointing out that Jeff Mermon should never have sent this, his, made the comments he did. Jeff then shot back about three hours later, a competing letter, pointing out exactly where we're authorized under the law and under the rules to say what we did, urging the, the staff attorney to make a ruling on it. And then went through, again, all of the reasons that we think they overlooked some facts that were in the record, that Loadstar said was not in the record. Jeff picked it out and, and put them in. So that now is coming up on the 24th before the full Siding Council at 1:00 in the afternoon. And it's going to be on, by Zoom, so that if people want to see that, I'm going to get the site and give it through the town manager's office tomorrow. So hopefully, we can post it and, you know, people can watch. We're item number seven on the agenda. It starts at 1:00. We're hopeful that perhaps more curious eyes will actually look and reexamine and, and listen to the public here in Enfield, both the town and the interveners. And that's all I have.
Okay, we go to reports from special committees. And John, do you have anything? Gina?
Bob's good. Cindy?
For the record, for the record, Gina's got a very good sense of humor. I want to say that for the record. And I'll just say, general governance, we, we, I think it was referred to us against, not another sore subject, solar panels on town-owned property. So basically, if the town, if the council wants to look at it, it's a council decision. It was a two-to-one vote to take it on a case-by-case basis. I was against it. I'm tired of seeing solar panels in our town. And if anyone wants to see in a neighborhood how solar panels are going to look, go over to Raffia Plaza and take a look behind it. If you, you can see it from the road, it's intrusive, it's outrageous. But that's my opinion, and I'll just speak for myself. We talked about that. Trying to think, nothing else from a general governance perspective. Oh, so I'm sorry to Mr. Young's question on finance. We will have an update in December. So what, what we've asked the town, the, sorry, John and our Department of Finance, he gives us an update on our tax collections. You know, I mean, the economy right now is tough for many people. So we're trying to stay ahead of it. Just if we see a drop in tax collections, that's obviously the first sign where we may have some trouble when it comes to budget. So John is looking at that. He'll give an update on the fund balance in December. And I forget the other thing we, oh, he's also going to look at exceptions. So again, there's been a lot of discussion on tax exceptions, you know, whether it be for the farmers, the seniors, for veterans. Obviously, that's reduction in our budget. I mean, not saying we shouldn't give tax exceptions, but we're actually going to hopefully itemize what we're already doing. And then to have an idea, and I don't want to put John on the spot, he'll have hopefully a rough estimate of the new law that was mentioned early with the veterans exception, that probably will be significant, you know, a tax reduction to the veterans, but a significant reduction to our revenue. So that's what we're working on. Gina, did I miss anything? Again, we had a very robust discussion with Counselor Hendrickson. And like I said, Gina has a good sense of humor, and she makes some fantastic egg, egg breakfast sandwiches that we appreciate. So that's it.
Jim? Jeff? Anything? Okay. Okay.
So I am going to need some help on this one, Sheila, because we're looking at, the next thing on the agenda for unfinished business was the 78 Main Street, and there's nothing in our packet because we haven't gotten any information on that. So we're just, just going to let that stay on the table. Okay, I just wanted to refer to that. I just wanted to make sure I was doing it right. And so the next thing is the resolution authorizing town manager to enter into a percheance and sale agreement for the sale of Five Taylor Road. This resolution. All right. Reading the wrong one, Marie.
Well, you need a motion, actually, take it off the table, right, Sheila?
Okay. Can I have a motion to?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are on Five Taylor Road. We are on Five Taylor Road. Is that, okay, just want to make sure. Do I have any motions?
Motion.
You take, you vote no if you don't want to take it off the table. You want to leave it there.
When am I making a motion on?
There was a motion in a second to remove it from the table. You just need a show of hands on that.
We're going to be taking a motion by a show of hands if we're going to be taking this off the table. So all those in favor of taking it off the table, raise hands.
Show of hands.
Show of hands to table it.
You want to leave it?
So we want to take it off so we can discuss. Right?
I think we-
That's my understanding.
So yes, but was there a second?
Is there a second to take this off? There was a second, and I, I counted five in favor of taking it from the tables, which is not enough.
Wait a minute, we got Mayor Nelson's here. That was including Mayor Nelson.
If you're talking.
Which means it would stay on the table tonight. So I'm reading this resolution.
No.
Nope.
We're moving on.
All right. We are down to-
Jeff, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, maybe I got.
Right. So it was this to take it off the table.
Yeah, well, just to clarify, I want to try to continue this to next meeting. I'm not sure of the proper procedure.
Six. Yeah.
I think there's, if I could speak, I think there's, I mean, these are, as I've learned in the council, these are all very important decisions here. But I think this is a big one. There's a lot of questions that I believe still need some answers. And I'm not saying which way I'm voting, but I would like to see us, if possible, get those questions answered, whether it's have the court people, the principals come in, have a discussion, get some answers, or it's through our staff or our attorneys.
It's tabled right now, Jeff. So if you want to have a discussion about this, you have to vote to take it off the table.
Very good.
All right. So I counted six with Jeff. Marie?
I did not raise my hand.
All right. So there were six in favor of taking it off the table to have this discussion that Jeff's talking about.
But could I see the, the votes again, then, so I can indicate for the record which counselors were in favor of removing it from the table?
Well, I know the four Democrats, Jeff and myself, had our hands up, so that's six.
So that's not how it was.
Counselor Russo did not.
Okay. So can we please have a show of hands?
So all those in favor, right, all in favor who wanted to take it off the table, raise your hand.
Russo, okay, yep.
No, you have to see all those against.
Nelson, Sicala.
All those against.
All those against.
Mike, where'd you have your hand?
Actually, I had it up because Jeff wanted to have a discussion tonight, so I had my hand up.
All right. So we're, we're just leaving it, right? Okay, we're going to move on.
No. Yeah. So Sheila, before we move on, there's confusion. If I can, point of order, if I may, for Robert's rules, if we take it off the table, we can discuss it. It doesn't mean we have to vote on it. If folks are asking for more information for next meeting, we can vote to re-table or vote on it, correct? Just want to make sure everyone understands that for the record.
That is correct.
So, so sorry, I think there's confusion for what people, I think, you know, does that clarify for everyone, point of order?
There's, there's no confusion, Mike. If we want to discuss it, it's got to come off the table. And Jeff-
I think some others were confused.
And Jeff wanted to discuss it, but you want to keep it tabled. And that's why you led them to believe that.
No, I did not. Oh, you got, you got to pay attention. I voted to take it off.
Moving on, I don't know how we discuss something.
Take it off. I voted to take it off.
We are going to be moving on to the consent agenda.
I voted to take it off.
Okay. Consent agenda, 13. One, resolution to transfer additional funds awarded for the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood Education. Childhood Development Center, ECDC, has received additional funds for FY 2025 for the school readiness grant. Additional funds will support ECDC teacher aid salaries and a portion of the salary of the FRC parent educator carrying out the school readiness liaison monitoring duties. Budget impact, there will be no budget impact to the town. Recommendation that the Town of Enfield Council approves the following resolution. I don't need to read these. Okay. Okay, then that's fine. All right. So we're doing a show of hands of one and two. Show of hands for one and two on the consent agenda.
I abstain, Sheila.
You're abstaining?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Okay, we have a couple of appointments. The first one is zoning board of appeals. A vacancy exists due to the resignation of Matthew Despard. Recommendation is Christine DeBoni as alternate until 1/1 of 2028. All in favor?
Motion to close.
Motion to close nomination.
Motion to close nomination.
Sorry.
And a second.
Second.
I was voting for it, so there you go.
Okay. And we have a second, so.
Zoning Board of Appeals, a vacancy exists for an alternate member. Recommendation is Dana Palmer until 1/1 of 26.
So move?
Second. Okay, so now-
Now move to close nomination.
Move to-
A second.
Okay. All in favor. Thank you.
All right, now we're on to resolution adopting Region Natural Hazard Adaptation Plan update for 24th and 29th.
Move to wave the reading.
Second.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor, this is something that the town has adopted every five years or so. And we have Lori Whitten up here, if she can elaborate further.
And I'm sorry to interrupt Deputy Mayor Pizner. We also will need a motion for the actual resolution to discuss it. A motion in a second before we can discuss. We just did the waving of the reading.
Okay. A motion to-
A second.
And a second. Okay.
Oh.
Now it's discussion.
Well, greetings. Hi. So this is, the Capital Region Council of Governments works with, I want to say it right, CIRCA, Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation. They've been working with them for 20 years. We've been adopting this plan every five years, as is required. Basically, CROG, which is the Capital Region Council of Governments, which is our planning, a regional planning agent- our planning, a regional planning agency, contracted to have this done, this for the last five years. They are ready to have this hazard mitigation and climate adaptation plan adopted by the local municipality, being Enfield. They have 38 municipalities. So basically, in short, this helps towns reduce their losses due to natural hazards and climate change. If we do not adopt this, we would not be eligible for FEMA grants. So if we had something like happened in Florida, or Asheville, North Carolina happen here, we would not be eligible to get FEMA funding if we do not adopt this plan. So do you want more background? Do you?
Can you give detailed plan? Because we asked for a copy of it, but we haven't seen it yet.
Okay, well, the plan is 19 pages. Basically, the CROG team worked with the Town of Enfield staff to identify critical facilities, such as the water pollution control, the schools that we have in the area, DPW, and among others, and then come up with means for protection from the elements and severe storms. They went through the challenges and what the losses were in our town over the last five years, and came up with mitigation strategies and In short, the multiple hazard mitigation needs were noted. These included the town should continue proactive tree and power line monitoring and maintenance to minimize damage and power outages, supporting local farmers during droughts, and that could involve implementing irrigation systems. The town should continue to look into options to address underperforming culverts near I-91 and near the river that experiences flooding over the past five years, to tackle lack of water, the lack of public water and sewer in some areas, and the town should explore options for extending these utilities to underserved regions. And Enfield may wish to incorporate a water quality monitoring system to ensure the health of the town lakes. So that is it, that is the goals. In short, however, this is a 19-page document, so it does get into the weeds a bit. And again, this town council has adopted this every five years for the last 20 years, and this is how we get protected from natural hazard and mitigation.
Do we have any questions? Mike, go ahead.
I just want, I just want a chance to read it. I mean, things have changed in five years, and I'm being frank here, their response, what we've seen in North Carolina and Florida is concerning. And so I just want to be able to read through the plan before I agree to, you know, sign on for another five. I'm not saying, and I guess, I don't know if you know this, maybe a question through deputy mayor, assistant town, did we get FEMA money in '21? I don't think we did. I think everything that was cleared by the town was all town, local tax money, if I recall.
I don't recall. Finance Director, do you remember receiving any FEMA money in 2021?
Yeah, I didn't think we got any either. So just curious, and I don't recall 2011, but I don't think we got FEMA money there either. So it'd be interesting to what, to know what grants we actually could qualify for. Do we have an idea what they would be?
They do list some out.
Do they? Okay, well, I haven't, I said, I wanted to take a chance to read through this.
Okay.
Before I vote on it, just me, sorry. I want to make sure before we sign on to anything.
My only concern is that they need to have this done before November, because that is FEMA's deadline.
But we just got it the last, the first meeting before.
Today, we just got it today.
Well, I.
I understand, like, I'm not questioning, but this is, things have changed in five years.
I did send it out earlier.
Things have changed in the world. All right, thank you.
So some of the grants include Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program, which is called BRIC, Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program, FMA, and Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP. So those are the three bigger grants that we would be eligible for. And again, this is something that we do every five years, this town has done every five years, and everybody in the CROG region has done every five years. It's basically for our protection.
I want to make sure it's for our protection, sorry.
Well, CROG has a deadline of November 1st to have this done, so I just need to reiterate that. So.
I want to say, Lori, if they do approve it tonight, does that mean that we're automatically have to subscribe to it, or when the occurrence happens, we would still have to get their approval to seek?
It is my understanding that CROG needs to respond to FEMA by November 1st, and we are, I believe, one of the last communities.
My point is, say, we have a storm, Helena, that comes through here in six months, we would still have to apply for that FEMA grant, wouldn't we?
I believe you'd have to apply for it, but.
This will just makes us eligible, but we would bring it to council.
You would be eligible to apply for it if you don't sign this.
Right, this makes us eligible, but this doesn't mean we have to subscribe to everything at this point. We would go to council and say we're applying for the, whatever monies are coming from FEMA.
I believe so, yes. So.
Okay. I just wanted to privilege of the being eligible, that's all.
Mayor Nelson, do you have anything to say on this?
No, I'm good with it.
So we're gonna need a roll call on this, correct Sheila? Okay, roll call. Deputy Mayor Pisner? Four. Counselor Russo?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Sicala?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson? Counselor Ludwig?
Abstain.
Counselor Mangini? Whoops, she stepped out. Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
And Mayor Nelson?
Four.
That's seven in favor, one against, and one abstention. Thank you, Sheila. The next one is a resolution to accept the drainage easement. Ardeoli Dodge rebuilt their campus at 525 Enfield Street. It was discovered that the drainage easement was required in favor of the Town of Enfield. The documents have been reviewed and approved by the town staff and town attorney. There is no budget impact. The recommendation is that the town council adopt the resolution, so let it be resolved that the Town of Enfield Council accepts the 25-foot drainage easement over 525 Enfield Street, date prepared 10/2/2024, prepared by Lori Whitten, Director of Planning.
So moved.
Again, Deputy Mayor, this was something that we discussed in executive session that's favorable to the town. You did request a diagram, and I believe Lori did provide that diagram.
It's in the back.
In the back, so Lori, you can further expound on it.
Yeah, essentially, I believe that you all are aware that Ardeoli Dodge campus had burnt down, and so they came back and wanted a new site plan. And at that time, it was discovered that there was a drainage easement that drains from the east of the property to the south, and the pipe is there, and the pipe leads to the property, it goes through the property, and then leads out to Montana Road. So Assistant Town Engineer John Kabibo realized, was like, hey, that's our water, we should probably get an easement. So they agreed to it. We've gotten all the documents, town attorney and the Assistant Town Engineer have vetted it, and it's just, they're giving us this easement so we can drain our water through their property.
I saw Mayor's hand up, so Ken, go ahead.
I want to thank you, Lori, and I want to thank Ardeoli Dodge for being a true partner in town, for correcting this matter. I appreciate you getting us the map that we asked for, Lori. I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions, questions? Okay, roll call, Sheila. Deputy Mayor Pisner? Four. Counselor Russo?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Sicala?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
And Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Ten in favor, none against. Okay, this next one is the resolution setting a public hearing for the TIF change policy. With the new projects being proposed in the TIF district, the committee members have been meeting more regularly. Upon review of the constituted advisory group or council, there was a discrepancy between the policy and the actual operations. The advisory committee composition is spelled out on page three of the policy and indicates the make of the committee. The TIF policy designates that the policy may be modified at any time by a majority of the town council after the council has entertained comments and concerns at the property-advised public hearing to be held prior to or simultaneously with the council meeting at which the proposed amendment be considered. There is no budget impact. The recommendation is that the Enfield Town Council approves the following resolution. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider changes to the TIF policy related to the TIF Advisory Committee on November 18th, 2024, at 6:55 p.m. And I. Okay, and I know Aaron's here, so if we have questions, he can come up. So do we have any questions on this? Okay, so once again, roll call, Sheila. Deputy Mayor Pisner? Four. Counselor Russo?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Sicala?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
And I think I missed Counselor Santinella, I'm sorry.
I thought it's.
I skipped right over you.
Four.
Okay.
I thought I.
Ten in favor, none against.
But you were talking.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next is a resolution to transfer funds for CCM membership. During the FY 25 budget process, the budget for the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, CCM, was removed. Information from CCM is used by several town departments, including Social Services, Finance, Human Resources, Revenue Assessment, and Town Clerk. They provide information such as analysis of state budget changes and pay rate comparisons. Budget impact, the transfer will not impact the budget. Recommendation, the town council approves the following resolution. Certification, I hereby certify that the above stated funds are available as of October 17th, 2024, by John A. Wilcox, Director of Finance. Be it resolved, in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. General fund, or contingency, rather, $32,132 to non-town agencies, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, $32,132.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? Cindy?
I do just want to offer my gratitude and thanks that we're going to go forward to rejoin CCM. I know, Mr. Mayor, Ken, you and I have history with CCM, and we know, we both know how valuable a tool this will be for us. You know, we've had some scholarships, some grants to our social service department, to name just one example. You know, as a former board member, I know how valuable the information is that comes from CCM directly to municipalities. So I just want to say thank you for everyone, you know, to support this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Bob?
Sure, I have a question. So we're pulling this out of our contingency fund? Is that the idea?
That's correct. We, I think, budgeted $130,000 in contingency, John? Oh, more, oh, $300,000, I'm sorry. So it would come out of that.
We, I'm sorry, we budgeted what?
$300,000 in contingency for some things that are just sometimes unforeseeable during the course of the year. So John is using that line item to draw the money from.
Any other discussion? Any other questions?
I.
Mayor, yep, go ahead.
I just want to say, after speaking with staff and Cindy, it is a great program, and I really, this is something I don't think we should have cut in the budget. I realize the mistake, and I want to make it right, and get the town the services that CCM offers, and get back on track.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, with that roll call, Sheila. Deputy Mayor Pisner? Four. Counselor Russo?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Sicala?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Against.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
And Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Nine in favor, one against. Okay, next one is request to transfer of auction funds for the repair of the Department of Public Works in-ground heavy-duty post-lift, $13,000. Persuade to Town of Enfield policy, the Enfield Department of Public Works disposes of surplus vehicles, equipment, and sundry personnel, personal property through online auctions. Proceeds from these auctions are deposited in revenue account 31042015-147027, which has a current balance in excess of $65,000. The 1993 post-lift is used for repairs to dump trucks and buses by lifting the vehicle from the axle, therefore unloading the tires and other components to change brakes and afford other repairs. Currently, the interior of the post is rusted through and is also leaked hydraulic fluid. DPW has taken this lift out of service because of these deficiencies. DPW has secured total replacement quotes, and they are in excess of $245,000. So DPW is recommended repair of the lift, not replacement. The Department of Public Works respectfully requests that the council transfer the sum of $13,000 from their revenue account, auction proceeds, to expense account, public works, machinery, and equipment. Therefore, budget impact, there is no impact to the town budget. Recommendation is that the town council approve the following resolution. Certification, I hereby clarify that the above stated funds are available as of October 17th, 2024, by John A. Wilcox, Director of Finance. Be it resolved, that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. Capital, non-recurring fund revenue, proceeds from auctions, $13,000. Two, capital, non-recurring fund, public works, equipment, machinery, and equipment, $13,000. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any comments? Ready for roll call, Sheila? Deputy Mayor Pisner? Four. Counselor Russo?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
He stepped out.
Whoops, he stepped out, I'm sorry. Counselor Sicala?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
And Mayor Nelson?
Four.
That's nine in favor, none against. Okay, the last one is a resolution authorizing senior volunteer tax program fiscal year 2026. This program will not impact the overall budget of the town. It will slightly increase the mill rate charged on real estate and personal property. Recommendation that the Town of Enfield, or the Town Council, approve the following resolution. Be it resolved, that the Enfield Town Council reestablishes the senior tax, volunteer tax program, providing up to a $400 tax credit for taxes due July 1st, 2025, for senior citizens who meet the parameters of the program. Be it further resolved, the program costs will be capped at $100,000, and if the cost exceeds $100,000, the tax credit amount will be reduced on a pro-rata basis so that the total cost does not exceed the cap. So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? Mayor Nelson?
I just want to refer to Mr. Young's comments. If we don't use the full $100,000, the $20,000 extra will be referred back to fund balance. So I appreciate his concerns, and I agree with him, but I don't want to be stuck in a situation like we were last year, where we were underfunded by many thousands of dollars. So although I understand you want an amendment at this time, I'm not willing to do that. I'd rather be safe than sorry. Thank you. I'd rather be safe than sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mike?
Deputy Mayor, Town Attorney, just curious. So the reimbursement for people who serve on boards, how is that not a charter issue? And so I'm fine with this, other than I think it shouldn't, people who serve on boards and commissions shouldn't be getting, it should be just people who are regular volunteering in the town. Isn't, I mean, isn't that, we have a charter revision commission that's been established. Shouldn't that issue be brought up, if it's going to be brought up, through the charter revision?
I believe I rendered a legal opinion on this with regard to a specific individual.
No, I'm just asking in general. I'm not asking about individual, I'm just saying in general, if we're going to pay people to serve on boards, whether the council or any other, shouldn't that be a charter, through the charter revision? That's all I'm saying, I'm not-
Well, it's a good topic for the charter revision. The charter does cover some individuals now, but not all individuals. So, yeah, that's a good topic for your charter revision.
Okay. I mean, I'm going to make a friendly amendment, and you guys can vote it down, but I think this should exclude volunteers for boards and commissions. It should be folks who are actually volunteering in the town, and which I thought was our original intent when we did this three years ago.
I'll second.
Yeah, go, I'm good.
So Gina, can I just say one thing, and then I can go to you? So I'm on this committee now, I'm on this, as well as Counselor Crisati. And the committee is very aware of the fact that the parameters have to be changed and tightened up. What's happened right now is that we have seniors that in good faith are following what was passed last year. So by moving forward with this now, we are allowing the seniors who in good faith did their 50 hours of community service volunteering to be able to get this tax credit. Moving forward, we are looking at changing some of the parameters. Right now, they have to be a 501(c)(3). Am I correct with that, Bob?
Yes. All of the participants, everybody who's eligible, has to fall under a 501(c)(3) program, and they have to get a signature from the head of that organization. So there is a verification of the 50 hours. And the group decided that this year, that because of the success and the participation, and John was very, let's be, visionary in saying that allotting the $100,000 in the event that we have more people take part in this particular program, that the monies are there. If the monies don't get used up, then they go back into the fund balance. And so the group was good with that. But we decided that there was not going to be any major changes due to the fact of the popularity of this particular program and to Counselor Ludwig's suggestion as, you know, moving forward, if in our discussions with the charter, that we could possibly put something like that in there. But we felt at this point in time that it was not in the best interest to change anything at this point.
So moving forward this year, we're going to keep it the way it was, but we are, there's no two questions about it. We are going to be looking at tightening up some of the parameters. It was one of the discussions. George is shaking his head yes. So we were all in agreement with that, and things do have to be changed. But again, you know, we have our seniors that have been doing this in good faith. They're going to the senior center, they're handing Mary their volunteer. Mary's taking it, she's like, what do I do? Are we doing it? Are we not doing it? So this is just saying for this year. Moving forward, things will be changed.
Okay, there's an amendment on the floor, and it's seconded, so we have to vote on the amendment.
That's correct.
I thought Counselor Santinella had comments.
I did, I had a question about your amendment. So, we can talk about boards and commissions.
You turn on your mic.
Well, I thought that's not the spirit of why we did this.
But should I just, so if you're on the board of-
Is this mic on? Oh, sorry, if you're on the board of the food shelf, would that count?
I was thinking a board, town-sponsored, like, right.
So what I would suggest is, could you be more specific and make it town-sponsored, town municipal boards and commissions to eliminate some of those others?
Fair.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a friendly amendment to my amendment, and I second it.
So, right, I think, so I would second his amend- Right, but I think that you could withdraw-
I can withdraw my amendment.
If Counselor Hendrickson agrees since he seconded it.
I withdraw my amendment and second John's suggestion.
So this is discussion on your amendment? Okay. No, I have my hand up to discuss it. I actually, so when we talked about this in leadership, we did, we tried to separate this year's volunteers that were already doing it, and then what would happen years after, which I think is what you just said. So I don't disagree with the amendments in theory, but I agree that, you know, what Bob and Marie are saying is that people have already started. I don't know if they are following what's in writing now. I really don't think it's appropriate for us to change that. It may not affect anybody, it may affect one person. I don't know, I have no idea if they have actually, if there's anybody on any of those commissions. I agree with it, because I hope that may be one of the things that gets changed. Because I don't think anybody thought about that, it wasn't what I anticipated. But they're within their right of doing that within the parameters of how we wrote it. So that's my comment on the amendment. I did actually have a question on the original motion, so when we get back to that, just call on me again.
So just, you know, to that point, I agree with Counselor Ludwig, but I also am concerned about taking something away from people who had an expectation going in. So maybe we should just take that off and just deal with it sort of the next round, because I just don't want people to feel like we're doing a bait and switch. I think I would be really offended by that. So I think I should just, I would, I'll withdraw my, I'll just withdraw that because I just, I think it's unfair for people who've started down a path.
I'll withdraw my second in fairness to you.
Mayor Nelson, you have your hand up.
I agree with Counselor Cicalla. These people have already put in the hours, it's almost the end of the year. The program has quite a few issues that need to be addressed, and I think before we approve next year, we really need to sit down and go over the concerns that Councilman Ludwig has, which are valid concerns. I just think we're too late in the game to make these changes when these people have already put the time in. So I'm glad to hear that we have withdrawn the amendment to this.
Mike?
So again, thank you, I again appreciate what you're saying, Counselors Santinella. And I think just to be clear here, so when, again, so there was confusion when we did this in the spring, you know, and folks, we're, you know, if this goes greater than $100,000, I want to be clear, and I want to say it in public, because if it goes greater than $100,000, we're going to prorate it. If we're not going to come and find another $25,000, I want to be clear, because that's what supposedly the debate was in the spring when we were doing a budget, and here we are in almost November, and we're still having the same discussion. And so then in the second piece, so what is the timing? So it feels like we're, again, always under the gun making decision. When is this committee going to meet? When does, if the budget starts, again, our next budget is July 1, the budget will be starting in the spring. I like to, whatever that committee, that we have a recommendation in the winter, early winter, because again, I think there's some things in there that go against what we thought this program was going to do when we did it three years ago. Thank you.
We actually have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday. So, and we've been meeting like every two weeks, so.
Okay, and Gina did have something to say, so I'm going to have Gina speak.
So I guess my question might be for John. When we discussed this in leadership, so the fiscal year and the calendar year. So this resolution, and I'm sorry, because I'll own this, because I actually said you didn't have to read the top, and now I actually have a question. So this page has your 23, 24, 25, and 26 in it. Can you just make sure, make me wrap my head around making sure that the title fiscal year is correct, and that we're budgeting the $100,000 for the current fiscal year that we're in for the calendar year, and then, you know what I mean? Because all, there's four years on this one page. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that.
Okay, so the way the program was implemented in the first year was volunteer hours that were performed during calendar year 2023 were eligible for a tax credit. If you're doing it in tax, in calendar year 2023, the next time we do a tax bill is in July of 2024, okay? So you are, July of 2024 is actually fiscal year '25. So that gets, that's where all this confusion arises, the difference between the calendar year and the fiscal year. So for this particular resolution, this will be for volunteer hours performed in fiscal, calendar year 2024, and the next billing will be July 1, 2025, which is fiscal year 2026, 2025, '26.
Okay, so the title is correct.
That is correct.
I think that's where I got a little mixed up, because when we were talking about it in leadership, we were talking about 2025. But that does make sense, because it's the July 2025 bills for the fiscal year 2026. It's a lot of numbers. Okay, thanks.
But I know, remember the discussion in leadership, trying to do the numbers. I get it.
We can add the grand list year into that, too.
So here's just, here's the question, just here's my concern, or just the issue with the cap at $100,000, and then the prorated thing. So if we have $100,000, we have $400 per person, so the first 250 people get $400?
No, it's going to be evenly divided.
But that's, right, so four, right, so 400 times 250 is $100,000.
Okay.
But what happens then is if you get 300 people, all of those people who were in thinking they were getting $400 are now getting-
And that's why it says up to 400. The part that I didn't read, Gina said I didn't have to read.
It's actually in the resolution, too, so you got it there, too. You got it there.
I'm sure it says that.
Got it.
Up to-
Yeah.
Got it, okay. But people are really not going to know what they're getting until after it's subscribed. So they could, again, they could end up doing 50 hours of work for $200 in tax credit. But they don't know that until the end.
And the committee was very okay with that.
Okay.
And it was what the committee decided at this point, that's what we have to do.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, just one final word in regard to all the members that are on that committee. It's a small group of people that I think have done a fantastic job. Maria and myself are on this committee, and, you know, once again, we are going to look at everybody's suggestions moving forward. But once again, at this point in time, everybody was in agreement as to the parameters of not changing anything with this particular program. But let's just take care of this year, and then we will make some necessary changes the following year, period. So hats off to all the members of that committee. And, you know, we're up here trying to dissect hard work of what people have done. So kudos to everybody on that committee. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for roll call? Roll call, Sheila.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Russo?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Cicalla?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nasuda?
Four.
And Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Okay, the next item is items for discussion. Do we have anything up here? Anybody have? No? Okay. Any other business to come before the council for said meeting? And back to public communications. Does anybody want to come up and speak to council? You'll have three minutes. Seeing none? Counselor Communications? Going once? Going twice?
Sold.
Okay, now. And I'd like to thank everybody for their patience with me tonight. I just thank you for your patience.